Good evening. Hello, everybody. I'd like to call this special meeting to order. This evening we have Keith is taking notes for us for the minutes.
Speaking nice and slow.
We'll have to go more slowly for his fingertips. We have Chuck Sheen, myself, Ben Philbrick, Lynn Conway, Marge Salinger, and Gary Belkey. Ryan Deasy was out six, so I was going to have Marge sit in for Ryan, and we'll have Gary sit in for Fred Dykman. And we expect Andy Meek at some point to join us as an alternate. First on the agenda are the minutes. Minutes for numbers 1712, December 6, 2022. They were revised before Lynn signed them to her editorial liking. And so they have been resubmitted, and I am looking for an approval on those minutes as revised.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Chuck. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Lynn. Any discussion? You like them now?
Yes, they're good. Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Stand on the 24th, Mr. Chairman. I was not present.
Oh, thank you. Okay. People come and go. Alrighty. No one opposed? Alrighty.
Done.
We have a regulation rewrite online meeting, number 1716, on January 24. What's the board's feeling on those minutes for that meeting? Do I hear motion to approve?
Motion to approve minutes.
Do I hear? Thank you, Marge. Do I hear a second? Was no one else present for that meeting? You were missing?
I was there, yes.
You were there?
Yeah.
Lynn, you were on that one?
This was on December. I'm sorry.
Yeah, you were.
January.
January.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And you were missing.
I was not, no.
Can we go ahead and approve with three?
Yeah, that's all we need.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Opposed. Two abstentions. Thank you. Keith, over to you.
For under correspondence, item 4A here, it's a property owner letter asking the commission to change the zoning district of three residential properties on West Vine Street and Pawtucket. So I received a letter from Allen and Christie Head from West Vine Street about how their house lot, along with their two neighbors there on the north side of West Vine Street, are zoned GBR 130, Green Belt Residential, while the rest of the whole neighborhood of houses of the same size are all zoned RH10, which is a much more dense zoning district. The GBR 130, as you know, is the town's lowest density district. It's usually in rural areas or areas that are environmentally sensitive, has large setbacks, and lower FAR requirements. It's geared more towards three-acre lots than the smaller lots in this area. In the RH10 zone that all the other neighbors have, is the zone normally found in the sort of residential areas of the villages in Mystic and Pawtucket. As far as the history of it, these three zones have, these three lots have been zoned GBR 130, or some lower density zone, at least back to 1979. The old maps get kind of fuzzy and hard to read there. It's unknown why they are located in that zone. There's no particular environmental resources right there for those three houses, and they're served by utilities just like the other houses on the street. Section 2.9 of our zoning regulations does allow undersized lots to get some relief by using the bulk requirements of more appropriate zoning, other zoning districts. But it's still not the same as if they were zoned RH10. So their request is for the commission to submit its own zoning application, a zone change application, to change those three houses to RH10. And one of the reasons that they're asking the commission is because a requirement for a zone change is that you need an A2 survey. So that's difficult to do for three separate homeowners there. So sort of like the request, the rabbit request we had at a previous meeting, the options in this case would be for the commission itself to apply for a zone change application, which would need a public hearing and take a few months to get done. Or consider the issue as part of the comprehensive zoning rewrite, when I'm sure we will look at the zoning map and look at properties that could be changed into other zones across town.
Any questions or discussion?
So Keith, these three lots, do they border across the street, either side, or behind? And all that is the RH?
All the other houses on the street are RH10. The properties are also next to West Vine Street School, which is a very large property, and that's zoned GBR 130. But all the normal residential properties are zoned RH10 there.
But West Vine is GBR?
I'd be inclined to have our own public hearing and have us change it rather than waiting for the regulation rewrite. Seems like something-
If it appears to be a mistake.
Yeah, I think we ought to correct it.
What it sounds like.
Yeah.
Then it, you know, I don't think it needs to get wrapped into some comprehensive review. Is that what it appears to be to you, Keith?
Yeah, it's hard to say if it was a mistake, but I don't see any other reason for it.
Yeah. Yeah, so if there is no reason for it, I... Does this, does the requester represent all the owners of these properties?
I think the letter sounded that way, yeah. That's how I interpreted the letter.
Was there a possibility that this was part of a parcel that the West Vine Street School was on, and it was divided off?
Maybe, but they're small lots, so they wouldn't meet today's RH GBR 130 standards. And they're the same size.
But if it was part of the whole thing, and they divided it off, and just didn't, you know, make the change at that time?
Yeah, it's possible. It's hard to know what happened first. You know, the lots being created, or the zones.
When were the lots created? You don't know when the lots-
I'm not sure when the lots were created.
When were the houses built?
I don't know. Oh, it's part of the assessors' information, so.
And if the town, if the zoning board moved to make the change via a public hearing, then there is no survey requirement?
That's right. Only the commission is exempt from that requirement. Because the commission can basically rezone whole neighborhoods, and there's not, you know, without a survey.
And there'd be no tax implications, one way or the other?
Yeah, I can't say what the tax implications would be for those property owners.
Should we make sure that all of the property owners agree? I just would hate to think that we received a letter from one requesting this on behalf of all, and maybe it's a minority opinion.
Maybe. I can't see the benefit of being kept in the GBR 130.
Okay.
But how about the surrounding neighbors?
Well, the surrounding neighbors are all already zoned RH10.
But maybe.
So, you know, the worst that would happen is that these three properties get to put on little additions that the rest of the neighborhood can already do.
Right, and they might not want that.
Maybe not, but they are allowed to do it.
Well, it's one thing if there was a mistake. It's another thing is it was what it was. They bought the property. They're bordering a lot that's, you know, a different zone with a different density. And somebody comes in, they want to change it. I would think that, just like anything else, the surrounding neighbors would need to have a say, one way or the other, not just the owners.
Right. And that's what the public hearing might be.
That's the public hearing we're going to hold.
It almost looks like we created a spot zone by doing this, you know, for these three residential properties, which-
Incorrectly.
Yeah, inadvertently.
Yeah, inadvertently.
Except you just said that West Vine is the same zone.
Across the street.
Right, so then it's not a spot.
And, well, you got one.
Yeah.
Further down West Vine, it jumps across to the same side, the north side of the street.
Right.
So those three houses on the north side were excluded from...
I see what you're saying, but I don't think it's spot, so. I mean, finally they go into public hearing, thank you.
Yeah, so am I, actually, because anybody who objects has an opportunity to be heard.
Rather than right now.
Right.
Yeah.
So I guess we proceed with that, Mr. Chairman?
But the others, the neighbors would be notified, correct? They would be notified, and any bordering neighbor would be notified.
Right, and of course the three property owners themselves.
Yep, okay.
Do I hear a motion on this question, then?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
To hold a public hearing on these three?
I'm sorry, yes, the request.
Right. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Lynn. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Alrighty, Keith. Public hearing time.
Actually, we've got these, a few other things here. Item 5B, other commissioner reports, is to appoint a commission member as the commission's representative to the Regional Planning Commission. The Regional Planning Commission, they're part of CECO, the Regional Planning Agency, they get together every few months. One of the things they do is help prepare the regional plan and provide input on that. And sort of it's a bit of a clearinghouse for neighboring towns to get together and discuss planning and land use issues. It's made up of members of various PCCs in different towns. And there hasn't been a Stonington member in quite a few years. Curtis Lynch was the last one, for those of you that were on the board with Curtis, so that was sort of a while ago.
They meet quarterly?
Yeah, I think they meet quarterly.
In Nor- where do they meet, you know?
I think the meetings are virtual for now, but when they were in person, they were in Norwich. So this isn't necessarily something someone needs to jump up and volunteer for right now, but at, you know, if there is someone who's willing to do it, we could make a motion to appoint.
Any volunteers amongst us this evening? Do I wait till we have the full cast?
No, that's true. Yeah, we are missing some people.
Let's pose it again when we have a full house. I'll consider it, but let's make sure. Okay. Thank you.
Item 5B2, this is Brandon Flack's request for consideration of changes to the town's bonding requirements for land use development, specifically subdivision lots. This was a topic that the commission started talking about on the December 6 meeting, which is about for certain subdivisions, like Mr. Flack's, that didn't involve new roads or new public improvements, about whether the erosion and sedimentation control bonding should always be done as a whole, submitted for the whole development, or could be done on a lot-by-lot basis. Since that time, Mr. Flack has submitted the bond for the whole development, as our typical practice is. But he wanted to still have the discussion with the commission and see what the commission thought on that. So at the last meeting, if this was approved, this change in policy, the commission wanted to see a written policy out on as far as guidance for something like this would be approved. So in page 16 of the staff report, there's a draft subdivision erosion and sedimentation bonding policy, which sort of spells out when something like this might be okay. For individual lot bonding, it says the commission might, may explicitly allow ENS bonds to be submitted on a lot-by-lot basis, rather than for the entire development, under the following circumstances. If the subdivision does not include construction of a public or private street or any other public or common facility, including but not limited to common stormwater or utility infrastructure, that the subdivision has to contain four or more building lots, and that the bond must be paid prior to issuance of a zoning permit for development of the individual lot. So the policy is just drafted in case this is something that the commission wants to do going forward. In general, I mean, the pros for this change would be less burdensome on the owners of certain types of subdivisions, because the ENS bond for the whole entire subdivision can be kind of burdensome. But the cons is that it's harder to enforce. It's more burdensome for staff in the commission. Harder to enforce, especially if you have a situation where you have two or three lots being developed by different people at the same time, and there's an erosion problem, let's say there's erosion on the street or something like that, and you're not really sure who's responsible for it. The different owners are pointing at each other.
My main concern was the generational aspect. I mean, if somebody's hanging on to a lot for their grandchildren, how does that carry through? The town has to maintain that paperwork for 40 years? Versus leaving it alone the way it is, where the burden's on the developer.
Which in a way is sort of how it is now. Like if someone puts up a big ENS bond for the whole thing, one of the lots might not be built for 40 years, and we're still holding on to some of that money forever, until it's done.
Someone under those circumstances, if they wanted to get rid of the bond, could come in and, before they build the house, build the driveways, grade the area.
Do the infrastructure.
Land scape it, and come to the commission for release of the bond, and post some other kind of surety when they want to build a house. And I think we would consider something like that. You know, I was looking at DEEP's website today in anticipation that we'd be talking about this. And I did watch, I wasn't at the last meeting, but I did watch the presentation in detail. And I agree with a lot of what Lynn said, that we don't have enough information on this particular project to really make a judgment. You know, and I think it is sort of making a policy statement if we move to this. On larger projects, more complex projects, subdivisions with roads, places where you immediately abut a wetland and the prospects of offsite impact are higher, places where you have high soil erodibility, steep terrain, projects like that shouldn't be considered for this type of activity where we bifurcate responsibility, because I think the town is taking on risk. I was surprised, I'm sure the town attorney had his reasons for not wanting to apply on this, but it seems to me that by fragmenting the responsibility, the town assumes risk because it's harder to assign responsibility. But by the same token, on the website, I noticed that DEEP right now is in the process of a general revision to the guidelines to sediment and erosion control for the whole state, which all towns sort of derive their individual regulations from. That's sort of the bible that everybody refers to in terms of DEEP's guidelines for sedimentation and erosion control, and they're referred to in our regulations. And within the new guidelines, they talk about not only adopting a policy to approve sedimentation and erosion control plans, certified sedimentation and erosion control plans, where you set standards. They also recommend that towns adopt the policy to amend those plans. So while I don't think we have enough information to really consider this, it does not appear that this is a simple, just a simple project that the Flacks are proposing. It's greater than five acres. That fits DEEP's-
Attention?
Definition for more complex. It immediately abuts a wetland. That fits DEEP's definition for more complex. It's more than one lot. That fits DEEP's definition for more complex. So it falls into the more complex category in three separate rulings. Doesn't mean that I would prejudge an application if they wanted to bring it forward when we adopt standards, but it doesn't appear like it's a simple project that would qualify for that type of bifurcation of responsibility. I've been in the process where, or in the position where I've had to administer these bonds. And I feel sorry for you, because you were there. But it's not an easy task.
It must not be.
Even when one person is responsible to call a bond, regardless of whether it's a surety bond that's tougher, or it's a cash bond, which these are. You still have to assign responsibility. And when more than one party is responsible in a matter alike erosion and sedimentation control that could flow across multiple lots and impact multiple lots, some of the same parties that are asking you to call the bond could be causing the problem. So it is a very complex question. So bottom line is, I don't think we have enough information, at least from my perspective, to consider Mr. Flack's request for his property. He'd have to provide more details. It does not appear to me like it's just a simple project, though, that I would look favorably upon. I do think that as we rewrite our subdivision regulations, we ought to think about this in greater detail, as you suggested, Lynn. And I agree with that. And look at how these new guidelines take place, and see if the guidelines recommend some criteria for amending applications. Because if that were the case, and someone did have a situation like Mr. Flack's, and he wanted to come in to amend his plan, and really we've approved his subdivision plan, and I think in the subdivision plan, he's the responsible party for the sediment and erosion control plan. He's actually named on the plan. So I'm not sure if we could even amend the subdivision plan just by-
It's a done deal.
I think you'd have to amend the subdivision.
Sorry, a done deal.
You know, but if our regulations, our subdivision regulations, provided for an amendment process, maybe we could do it. If perhaps he was down to two lots, all the driveways were built, and there was a lower risk, then under those circumstances, it might be something that we could consider. I would want to be fair to him in every respect. If that were the case, it falls into the more simple category.
Well, he's already paid the whole bond, right, Keith?
He did. He did. But doesn't mean he won't come back, you know, and take advantage of any kind of ruling that we might make on this in the future. And, you know, he might be able to make a case if, let's say, multiple lots are developed and all the driveways are developed. In that case, it might fall into the more simple category. So bottom line is, while I don't think we have enough information now to make an informed decision on his application, at least I don't. I think Lynn's suggestion that we look at this in more detail, consider an amendment process, be added to the regulations, so that people could come back for things like this, and then we don't adopt a regulation where one size fits all. We get a chance to look at the individual criteria associated with this request and make a judgment on the merits of each application.
Case by case.
And I think that deals with Fred's, at least what I understood Fred's objections in reviewing the meeting today. Fred was concerned that any sort of a policy would be a one-size-fits-all. And I agree with his objection. It doesn't.
Okay, yeah.
There are simple cases, and there are much more complex cases. And sediment and erosion control plans go from the simplest to the most lengthy and complex plans. And the variations always come around three major factors. Size of the project, severity of the site with respect to slope, ground cover, you know, existing development, adjacency to wetlands and watercourses, and the potential, the third is the potential for offsite impact. So those are the three things we really have to look for in each case if they come back and want to bifurcate responsibility.
Thank you, Chuck.
Thank you.
Any other further discussion?
I agree. I agree with you. And I hope that, you know, if we do move forward and we amend the regulations, that we create some kind of a checklist or a grid box. Because not all members will have the same depth of knowledge. And so I think it'd be good just to make sure all the points are hit in the discussion when it's presented on an individual application.
And every site is so individualistic.
Exactly.
Yeah. Gary and Marge, do you have any input?
No, I think that was well said, and I agree with that.
I agree. And the one thing in the draft that scares me is just the word discretion. Always with, that's, they were trying to get away, things like that, not to add up personally. But I agree with Chuck. I wouldn't go- And I don't think it was, you know, like you said, the developer, maybe someone else would have bought this land if they could have reduced the bond for that price, because they all factored that in, so.
Right.
You know, so I'm happy that he posted the full bond. In a sense, the change, it wouldn't have been a fair previous possible purpose for this stuff.
So we'll leave things how they stand now, Keith, and we'll bring it up with our regulation rewrite in more depth.
Yeah, and in a way, you know, our regulation rewrite doesn't really touch this because it's not touching the subdivision regulations. But of course, it's something the commission could revisit at any time, you know.
Well, you might as well do it with Francisco and get his input.
It's sort of beyond their scope, because opening the subdivision regulations is a whole other, whole other document they're not looking at.
Okay. So what are you recommending, then?
Well, really,
Do we need more?
There's really no change needed for now, you know.
Right, that's how I feel.
You're not comfortable with changing the policy, so.
I do think that if, you know, since our guidelines sort of embrace and adopt DEEP's guidelines, that there's, this process is moving forward rather quickly, and kind of at the same time as this request. The webinar at DEEP is on February 23. It will move forward fairly quickly. The draft regulation's already published.
Okay.
And although nothing really moves that fast at DEEP, it will, new regulations will flow, and we may want to take those new regulations and enhance our own subdivision regulations. At that time, I think we could consider an amendment process.
Yeah, and I'm sure there's other changes to our subdivision regulations that the commission in the town might want to see. So, you know, whether it's through a consultant or not, it might be a good exercise just to go through our subdivision regulations, maybe after we're done with the whole zoning regulation project, and see if there's any changes that we all want there.
Okay. So would you like a vote on this for this evening, for your hearing?
Yeah, it's really not even required, because it's not an application. It's just sort of a discussion, but, you know, the consensus is definitely, you know, not to change the policy of requiring the ENS bond for the entire subdivision.
Correct. Thank you.
So administrative review items, item 5D1, ZON 2323 Garden Homes Derby Company, zoning permit application to expand restaurant area into adjacent laundromat. No expansion of the current permitted 55 seats is requested. Property located at 39 Whitehall Avenue Mystic, Assessors Map 164 Block 1, Lot 9/48, Zone GC60. So this application is for Christos Pizza on Whitehall Avenue. They're acquiring the laundromat that's right next door to them in that building. So in place of the laundromat, Christos is going to occupy that space and keep this number of seats at 55, which is what they're permitted for, what they have now, and physically expand into the laundromat space. On this floor plan, showing that the bar will sort of be expanded in there. It's an environmental benefit of not having a laundromat there. And the guidance in the zoning regulations talks about when a new special use permit could be required for a restaurant. In my opinion, the application, which eliminates an adjacent business and keeps the seats the same. the seats the same, doesn't warrant the submission of a special use permit application. Um, from what I understand, they may choose to add seats in the near future in which they, in case they'd have to come and apply to you for a special use permit. And the owners here, if there's any questions also?
Would you have any questions for the owner or Keith?
I just have one. How is the existing parking is there with, based on the current situation?
Um, you know, there's a decent amount of parking spaces there. Um, and it's a multi-tenant site where there's the building with the pizza place, a hair salon, insurance office, there's a separate commercial building which is a, a spa. Um, I don't have set plans that show just how many.
And for, are there any issues with the existing parking for the owner of? Yeah. What can I?
Just please state your name and address.
Hello, my name is Gene Arganese. Um, I, I own Christos Pizza. I bought it from Bill Knotts and um, yeah, he used to have a card game there, but that was him. I bought it in May of 2022. Um, and we're just, like you said, we're just occupying the um, card, uh, the laundromat right now.
And right now, is there enough parking there for the, just as it is?
Oh yeah, yeah, we have, we have ample parking for um, additional stuff and we're addressing Keith to make an addition later on, but as of now, we're keeping it at the 55 parking spots.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
How many, excuse me sir?
Couple more.
Sorry. Um, how many seats are currently in the restaurant?
Fifty-five.
There's currently 55?
Yes.
You're expanding it to the laundromat and you're not increasing the number of seats?
I'm sorry, can you talk a little louder?
Um, so there's currently 55 seats.
Correct.
You're expanding into the adjacent uh, area, the laundromat, which is quite big, and you're not increasing the number of seats?
No, what we're doing is, right now, it, the bar is a straight little bar across.
Yes.
And we're going to just turn it to an oval bar. So most of the square footage will be covered by the inside of the bar.
Mm-hmm.
And we're getting rid of some of the seating that's clogged up because there's a pool table in there.
Yep.
And we're going to um, just put the, the seating around the bar. Um, Keith has a picture of how it's going to look.
Okay. Okay. I've been in there, so I'm, I'm familiar. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you, do you serve alcoholic beverages here?
Yes, sir.
Do you, are you going to have to get your liquor permit modified?
Did I what?
Will you have to get your liquor permit modified?
I, I, when I, when I bought it in May of 2022, I had to get the liquor transferred, the liquor permit transferred to our new company.
Will you have to get it? I'm wondering, I'm just wondering, will you have to come back to us for that?
No, it doesn't have to be modified.
Okay, all that's with the Liquor Control Commission now because your special permit to serve has been granted.
Right, right.
I was just wondering if there's anything else we can do for you tonight while you're here, so you don't have to come back.
Well, what we're looking to do is eventually, we'd like to increase the seating capacity.
Uh-huh.
Um, uh, to, was it 72 seats from 55 eventually?
I think that's going to affect parking, so you're going to have probably the site
We have, we currently have 32 parking spots.
Uh-huh.
And um, we share the, the building with, um, well, it was the laundromat, which we're taking that portion over. But there's a, um, insurance company and there is a, um, a lady that cuts here on the side. So we share the, those parking spots with them. The what?
That was outside.
Oh.
As long as you're, as long as we don't have to do anything on the liquor permit, that was my only question. As far as changing seating, that's a different story. I think, I think that's, you have to come back.
Right, that's right, that's what Keith told me. That's why we're just keeping the 55 seats.
Okay.
Excellent, thank you.
We're all clear on that.
Thank you.
Would you like a vote on this one Keith?
Yeah, this would.
Do I hear a motion on this? Is there any more discussion, I should say?
Will we approve the application of Garden Homes Derby Company, uh, as presented this evening, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you Chuck. Thank you Lynn. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Item 5D2, ZON 2324, Whalers Inn RE LLC, zoning permit application to operate takeout coffee station in existing retail store, property located at 4 East Main Street Mystic, assessors map 182 block 1, lot 14, zone DB5. Um, this is for the existing Just a Mystic retail shop at 4 East Main Street. This is the old uh, Mystical Toys building. Um, they already exist there as a retail establishment. They share the building with Mystic Chamber. Um, and Just Mystic is really just looking to add a self-service coffee bar in their, in their building. Um, the coffee service won't be a separate establishment. There won't be seats or waitstaff or anything like that. Um, if you picture like a convenience store where you press the big silver things and coffee comes out, that's what they're looking to do. Um, this interior work is addition of interior walls, partition of storage area and a chamber office, um, but not to create a separate coffee service area and conforms to the DB5 bulk and use requirements as an accessory to the retail sales so that the use of the establishment isn't changing. Uh, it's still retail, um, it's just adding the service.
Does Ledge Light have to get involved?
Um, they do, yeah. They'll have to approve of it. Not before zoning.
Okay.
But before they actually do it.
So Keith, if um, let's just say later down the line, the chamber doesn't use this space and somebody wants to come in and do a takeout window, they would have to come back? This does not.
Takeout, yeah, takeout window, we'd, we'd have them come back.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or?
It looks fine to me.
Do I hear a motion?
Will we approve the application of Whalers Inn, uh, as stipulated in item 2, uh, administrative review, section D of tonight's agenda?
Thank you Chuck, I hear a second. Thank you Lynn. Any other discussion, further discussion? Gary, you all right?
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So who?
So under item 6, old business, there, all three of those applications, uh, recommend tabling those until the next meeting. Um, 6A for the retail convenience store will have to be taken up at the next meeting. Um, and the others may, may or may not. But that brings us to the public hearing.
Um, Lynn doesn't have a pink sheet, can she just read the call from the?
Uh, yeah, yeah.
Uh, okay, I'd like to open up the public hearing for PZ 2234, ZC Spa and Cam Mystic Master plan, zone change, site plan and coastal area management review applications for various exhibits relocation and expansion alteration improvements, repairs, ADA accessibility, um, I'm sorry, accessibility improvements, signs and creation of pocket park and a public water taxi dock. Properties located at 75 Greymonville Ave Mystic, assessors map 173 lot, wa, excuse me, block 1, lot 1, and other properties within the Seaport NHD zone.
Thank you Lynn. Seated this evening, we have Chuck Sheen, myself, Ben Filbrick, Lynn Conway, Marge Salinger and Gary Belkey. The process is, um, there is a sign up sheet by the door over here that you can sign in for speaking when we get to that portion of the meeting. But first we'll, in favor, against, or opposed rather, or general comments is what we're looking for. First we'll hear from the applicant, then we will have the public input. Then will be rebuttal by the applicant if need be. We'll have staff input, board questions, and then uh, close the hearing and hopefully go to a vote this evening, but not guaranteed. You're on.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is John Casey, I'm a partner with the law firm of Robinson and Cole and very happy and proud tonight to be here representing the Mystic Seaport Museum. Uh, we've been here before. This is another amendment to the master plan and for site plan approval for the Seaport to relocate the boat hall within Rossi Mill, uh, as well as to provide vehicular and pedestrian improvements, ADA improvements and other uh, ancillary improvements throughout the campus. Quickly, uh, let you know who's with me here tonight from the Seaport is the president, Peter Armstrong, Ken Wilson, the director of facilities, uh, also Chad Frost, who you know from Ketten Frost, who's a project landscape architect, and our architect is Mark Moth. And you'll hear from just about all of us except Ken. So just background, I think most of you are aware of this, but the Maritime Heritage District was adopted in 2005 to specifically cover the Seaport property. Uh, its intent was to allow uh, greater flexibility for the Seaport rather than having to comply with the prior residential zoning designation uh, for the, the land, which caused a lot of problems, a lot of non-conformities. The master plan, it evolves over time to meet the needs of the Seaport, uh, while allowing the public to comment through this process on proposed changes and allows this commission to maintain control over the changes and the growth of the Seaport. This is now the eighth amendment to the master plan summarizing the last few, over the last few years in uh, the summer of 2019. Amendment number five, multiple projects, but most importantly, uh, it was the original approval for the boat hall in Rossi Mill. In the fall of 2019, amendment number six was the Global Foundation for Ocean Exploration, uh, Science and Exploration Center. In the spring of 2020, right before COVID hit, number seven was the master plan amendment that allowed for the replacement of Latitude 41 with the new Delamar Hotel. What we have for you tonight, Chad will review our 15 proposed amendments, uh, and site plan approvals. As I said, Chad will go through the specifics, uh, but before we get to Chad, I'm going to ask Peter Armstrong to come forward and to present to this commission sort of the overall sort of um, goal and, and uh, vision for the Seaport.
Thank you and good evening and thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. Uh, I guess I've been here two years, but I'm still the new guy, so I'm just going to try and give you an, an overview of my vision and the vision of the Seaport going forward. Uh, and when I joined the Seaport, it became pretty clear to me that it was a major part of the community of Mystic and the community of the area. And we needed to continue to make sure that we were part of that community and we're involved in that community. So this master plan really shows some of the ideas that were already before I got here and some of the ideas and some of the changes that we would predict for our vision going forward and really falls into, into three categories for us to, from my perspective, for us to be what I like to call a, a good neighbor, to be able to be part of that community and to help Mystic as much as possible because as Mystic expands and grows, that obviously helps the Seaport. So it really falls into three areas. One is accessibility. It was recognized when I first came that, that we really need to look at our accessibility for the disabled, that we're a historic old site, but obviously we normally, we, we need to make some changes that allow everybody to enjoy that. And so uh, this amendment has a number of ramps, et cetera, and changes to restrooms to allow that accessibility. Uh, and I'll later, I'll come on to talk a little about the LA Dutton and you'll see how we're also trying to expand our accessibility for that historic ship. The second one was really to look at the issue of the Seaport as a, as a hub for traffic. You know, it didn't take me very long to realize what the 27 was like, uh, and that we had to really make some changes to help the Seaport, help Mystic in particular. So you'll hear a little bit about how we're talking about using the car park lot, uh, or the parking lot as it's known in America. The, uh, the parking lot to allow us to, uh, to help with the, the reduction of that, particularly of the, a water taxi and a, a pocket park and, and so on. And then finally, to do what the Seaport does very well, which is display our, our objects, and in particular, obviously the ships. And the two areas that I would cover for that is the watercraft hall, which you're going to hear about as well, but also the LA Dutton, which is a huge schooner that was, is a historic ship and we've taken out the water. And the reason why I mention that is because it's the amount of work that we're doing that over the next three years to take that ship back to where it was, but also to give accessibility to the disabled while we do it. So we're intending to put an elevator and possibly some stairs and elevators and, and everything we can possibly do to allow disabled people to see inside the ship, which they've never been able to do before. So our overall concept and our overall vision is to make the museum as accessible to as many people as possible, to open it to as many people, to link it as much as possible to Mystic and to really make it part of the community of Mystic and the, of the community of the area because the thing I've learned, if I've learned anything, is how much people love the Seaport and have such an attachment and affinity to it. And we want to continue with that. And so this plan has many of those ideas to do that as well. So I'll pass you over to the team and let them give you a bit more detail into it.
Good evening, everyone. Chad Frost, across the Seaport Director. That's our receipt of mailings and other of the staff for notification, uh, further requirements, just so that it's on the record. Um, there was, that was all of the certified mailing that went out to all the budding neighbors. Um, so I'm going to run through the, the 15 projects. Um, you know, we've been here many times before. Uh, most of them, as you know, are kind of just, uh, I'll say bookkeeping, keep, as we go through and make minor modifications. Um, nothing as large as some of the last years we've been for like the, the hotel.
You see, Chad, are you going to be using a PowerPoint?
No.
No?
No.
Um, I'm just wondering how we can get the audience involved. I was under the impression we were going to be using a PowerPoint or, you know, a projector.
Uh, we did not come with that.
Okay.
Maybe you could tilt the drawing a little bit.
I can, I can talk and pick it up and move it, how about that?
You can multitask, that's wonderful.
I can do my best, yeah?
Okay.
Um, and we, if the neighbors, we did do a neighbor meeting.
Oh, okay.
Unofficial as well, and we presented this exact same information to all the neighbors we invited to the museum.
If anyone wants to come around while you're speaking so they can see the drawing, you're free.
But I'll pick it up and move it as well too, if that helps people.
If anyone needs a seat, uh, if there isn't enough seats, we'll help you out.
There's plenty of seats.
I don't even have to pick it up now. All right, fantastic.
Thank you.
So, so project number one, uh, that we're here to talk about is the Rossi Mill Boat Hall project. Um, as John alluded to, that was approved, uh, a couple of years ago in the Rossi Mill. At that time, it was oriented this way. Uh, based on some structure as we started developing plans, it became apparent that it needed to orientate in a different part of the building, so that's what this area number one is right here. So it's basically taking what was approved, uh, a couple of plans ago. It was approved at 33,000 square feet. This new orientation is 37,000 square feet. So it's a slight expansion, but the exact same uses, uh, primarily to display boats and be able to have exhibit space as you come and go through there.
That's all on one floor?
All on one floor.
Thank you.
Correct, yep, great point. Um, there is a basement level that's, that is below finished floor and in the flood zone. This first floor where all the exhibit space is above the flood zone.
Thank you.
Yep. Um, so that's, as part of this, it's a master plan and then we also have the site plan application for that particular project because it's, uh, ready for development. I'll also point out that in the front, um, the, the main entrance is now going to be on this front corner. We're trying to be as respectful to the building as possible, minimally touch the building. Mark Camo will, will go over the architectural plans for that on how we're planning to get people in and out of the building, uh, through that new front entryway out on the corner. Uh, so that is, that's project number one. Project number two is temporary exhibit banners that will be on the corner of Rossi Mill. So um, part of what the Seaport does is try to advertise to the town what's coming up and let residents know what might be happening in the next week or two and allow them to hopefully come to the Seaport and see those exhibits or maybe not go on Route 27 that day if they want to avoid the traffic. Um, and so part of that will be as exhibit space opens up in Rossi to do large banners on the side of the building, uh, fully, um, consistent with your regulations, uh, to be able to announce exhibits coming and going, uh, within the mill itself.
Excuse me, do you mind if we ask questions as we go since you have so? Excuse me, do you mind if we ask questions as we go since you have so many? Is that all right with everybody? So are these soft banners?
Yes.
On the side of the building or perpendicular?
On the side of the building, mounted to the building. It is truly a banner material, so it's not a hard sign and they're temporary in nature so they can be changed.
It lit at night with downward pointing lights?
At the moment, no.
No, okay. Thank you.
There are lights outside that will cast some light to it, but we don't have specific lights on.
Nice, okay. Thank you.
Yep. And I'll point out the banner, as requested in there, is 153 square feet. That is project number two. Project number three, as we kind of work through campus, is temporary restrooms. So this is a fairly simple one, but as you'll recall, currently the north heads are along the North Lane Way, just north of Thompson Building. They will be, as the hotel goes under construction, those heads go away. They will be reconstructed on the end of the new hotel building. However, during construction, we still need restrooms. And so they'll be bringing in a trailer and locating them just behind Stone, very close proximity. They'll be hooked up to water and sewer so that they will act and function like restrooms. They'll just be portable. And I would note that we did receive the comments from SLR and the Water Pollution Control Authority. We can fully comply with their requirements and basically it was make sure that we can shut off the water and the sewer and if there's a big storm going, move the trailer to higher ground, but otherwise they didn't have any significant concerns or comments for it.
So it's staying on wheels the whole time?
Staying on wheels, yeah. We'll do our best to cover it up and make it look nice, but it'll still remain portable. So that's project three. Project four is here in the center of campus. This is the membership patio improvements. So hopefully you're all members and that's the membership building right there. Behind the building is a small courtyard. It's in disrepair at the moment and in drastic need of improvement for ADA and accessibility. It's kind of very old bluestone that's heaved all over. We have steps into the buildings. There's a covering roof over there that's in need of replacement. So the membership patio improvements basically replaces all the bluestone with new bluestone, expands the ability for cover and provides accessibility to the buildings and to all the amenities surrounding the buildings.
Could you go on? What did you say about expands the ability to cover, for covering?
There is an existing cover within this area and we're going to put it back, but it'll be new and cover the patio that we put underneath of it. And it's basically, at this point, the concept is it's a tent structure, right? So it's a canopy, a temporary canopy that can be taken up and taken down, which is what's there currently.
Okay.
More or less seasonal?
Project five is the relocation of the stage. That's basically, there was an existing stage, literally right there. We're moving it 30 feet to the north, angling it slightly. When we call it a stage, it's not like a huge performance stage, it's just a small area where they do do readings and have some small music. We moved it out of the way so you have better views to the water and you have more room for people to be able to watch what's going on. Right now it's kind of perpendicular to the space, so we moved it to the corner.
That came before us already?
Correct, administratively, that's already done.
Correct. Do you have a question, Lynn?
I just want to make sure that there's nothing other than moving it 30 feet.
Well, when we got the administrative approval, it moved it and it added a roof with some electric service to it. That was all in the administrative approval.
Right, but no additional? This is asking for no additional change?
Correct, nope. So the master plan, we just, because that was done administratively, we have to incorporate it into the master plan, so it's part of the official master plan. So it's exactly what you approved already, we just have to note it, if that makes any sense.
Yeah.
Okay. Project six is the print shop handicap ramp. So as Peter mentioned, we are trying to make improvements throughout campus to improve accessibility and that's one of the buildings along the village that currently does not have accessibility to the building, so we're adding a ramp per this zone. Kind of any minor modification does have to get included into this, so that's why we have that ramp. Project seven is on the toy boat shed. It is also a handicap ramp to provide ADA accessibility into the building. Project eight is the youth team building area. So this is in an area in campus that's kind of hidden behind all buildings. If you've come in through main campus, you're walking down the drive, you don't see it from there because of the buildings and you also don't see it from Route 27 because of the houses along the road. It's kind of an underused area. If you were, when the Clydesdales came, they were kind of housed in that area for a short time. It's kind of back of house. And in that area, we're proposing to put in a youth team building area. So this is like balance teams, team building exercises, kind of low ropes, not high ropes or anything strong, but low obstacles for team building. It's not open to the general admission, but when schools come, when school groups come, this is an area where they can go and have some team building exercises. It's not like an additional amusement or something like that as part of the...
Is that where those dire dials used to be stored? Right between the walkway and the water?
No.
No.
Behind everything, yep. So that, this is...
Between the rope?
This is here, this is behind those buildings.
Yeah, the galley behind the restaurant.
Oh, over there?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Project nine, again, as Peter alluded to, we've been working with the neighborhood quite a bit, working with the town quite a bit to try to figure out how the Seaport can be a partner in solving some of the pedestrian and vehicular circulation difficulties of Mystic and Route 27. So number nine is a pretty exciting one. It is a water taxi location. So the Seaport is proposing to install a water taxi that would shuttle from this location down to downtown and back again. And the exact location downtown is still being determined, but up here, it will come in through here. It'll be possible to park in the parking lot, come across the parking lot and not have to buy admission into the Seaport and take the water taxi downtown and come back again. Of course, if you, they'd prefer you to come in, go through the museum, have admission, and then take it as part of your mission back and forth. And so that was the hope, to be able to get more people to park here, leave their cars before going downtown, leave them here for the day and take the water taxi back and forth.
So where would the site be at the Seaport?
The site at the Seaport is here.
The basin behind the visitors' center?
Exactly, yep. So that people can park in the south lot, come across the main entrance and come behind the gift shop.
Go through the parking lot.
Parking lot, and then there was a gate there that could be controlled and then the captain can come across, let people through and go downtown.
For a fee or for free?
Most likely for a fee, but that's all being worked out, yeah.
Lynn, you have a question?
No, I wanted to know exactly where it was. I'm having, I'm looking at the report and I don't think it's clear to me where it is, but you said it's behind the gift shop, so I know where that is.
Yep. Again, we think it'll be a great opportunity for people to be able to hopefully come, leave their cars and not have to go downtown and not be circulating and looking for parking spaces and things like that. Project number 10 is the Dutton Restoration Area, so that's basically right beside it. It is effectively a concrete slab put out there to do the restoration of the Dutton over the next three years. If you've been by the shipyard lately, the shipyard is very busy and doing great business restoring a lot of very important boats. The lift and the area behind the lift are currently full and occupied and we needed additional space for the Dutton restoration to happen. And you probably saw it in the paper because it's already been lifted and set there, but that's, we basically had to take down a storage area, some just tin roof areas that were covering wood storage, came down and the Dutton went in that place.
Storage was a liberal use of the word.
Very liberal, yes, yes, yes.
So Peter Armstrong mentioned an elevator there?
So...
That's a hope.
That's a hope, yep. So right now it's worth putting the Dutton there. If an elevator or full access goes, that would have to be a building permit would be, you know, either back for administrative change or just a building permit depending on what level.
Because those would be either really long ramps to get up that...
And then if you'll recall, like the Mayflower, there was a tower there so visitors could go up. That was all stairs, but it still was quite the switchback and quite the tower to get up there. So they're exploring those options to make it as accessible as possible to see that impressive restoration.
Thank you.
Quite honestly. Number eight, or excuse me, number 11, you've already approved as well. So this is the main entrance egress improvement. So we were here January of '22 for this. It's already built and done in the spring. We just had to put it on the master plan, so it's recorded as part of the official master plan as opposed to just an administrative review. But if you recall, we reconfigured the ADA ramps and the stairs as you come into the campus and what that experience is like, and then we moved the exit to go through the gift shop instead of before it kind of came up the lane way and went past some garbage and through the port de chaise to leave. So all of those improvements were already approved as that administrative site plan. 12 is a great project. It's picnic tables. And so during COVID, the bake shop changed their picnic tables out. They were trying to make sure that they still had the same amount of seating outside, but didn't have people sitting as close together. They had larger picnic tables and fewer of them. They swapped them out for smaller picnic tables, but then more picnic tables. It was done without a permit and somebody saw it and then, you know, we had to go back and look through seats and records and all that sort of stuff. So we're just documenting how many tables existed previously, how many tables exist currently and that the seating has gone down, it hasn't gone up, but we retain the right for those seats in the future for those few picnic tables that kind of went away.
So you're going to 28 now, is how I read this?
Yes.
And you have, reserving the right to go back to 38?
Correct.
Thank you.
And we don't count, I'll just put it out there, we don't count seats anywhere else internally, like any exterior seats in the lawn areas and things like that, we haven't had to count in the past. We are only doing it there because it's visible to the public way. That was 12. So 13, I think is another fun one and another great example of trying to work with the town and the neighbors. 13 is the pocket park at the very southern end of the property. The museum owns that piece of property right now. You would have no idea that they did. It's just kind of a partially mowed, you know, shrubby area that looks like it's part of the adjacent property, which is private parcel residence. As we've been talking with the neighbors on Isham and Bay Street and trying to improve pedestrian connectivity, so again, we can get people to hopefully park here and walk downtown, we've come up with some ideas that the town could do for improvements along Isham and on Bay to make those improvements for improved pedestrian connectivity. What the Seaport can control is this lot and we're proposing a small pocket park that the sidewalk could come in. It could have an artifact out in it so that it kind of acts as a placemaking landmark. And basically along the ideas of Anchor Square or Anchor Circle where the flagpole is and everything down by S&amp;P, that has a nice little pocket park and it's kind of memorable and it has some artifacts in it and that basically we could do the same thing on this corner. It would allow the town to be able to put in a better sidewalk and/or parallel parking, whatever, and make better connectivity for a pedestrian experience going down. And as you're leaving the main entrance, you'd be able to see it visually and we'd have some signage there to encourage people to walk instead of going across, getting in their car and driving downtown if they chose not to take the water taxi. We have actually measured it out. It's shorter time-wise to walk downtown than it is to walk across the street, get your car, drive downtown, not even counting the bridge going up, find, you know, a parking space at the arc center and then walk back to the center of town. It's faster just to walk from here, but because it's not visually connected, people are not doing that very often at all, so we're trying to help encourage that opportunity.
So this is going to go from Route 27 right down to where the former boat launch used to be?
So the pocket park is just this little length, full length of Isham Street. It doesn't have a full length because once we get down to the shipyard, there's some buildings that go out. We will, we've been in a special for the town, we'd be willing to move the fence that's there and give a little bit more room for a sidewalk or something like that.
The sidewalk will go inboard and will lose the half hazard parking that's there now.
So we have some, we've shown some plans to the town of what we would recommend. It's a town public road and so we're letting them take the lead on what those improvements should be.
Cars kind of parked.
All over the place. So we think there's a good way to have defined parallel parking. It should probably be one-way traffic because of the width of the road and improved pedestrian connectivity going through there. We've shared it with the neighbors, we've had a bunch of meetings with them. Seems very supportive. Town seems very supportive. So we're here saying we can, all we can control as a Seaport is that pocket park and we're willing to do that to be a good partner and to help encourage what we think is the right answer on that public road as it goes down.
Thank you.
Yep. And then project 14 is again, trying to partner with the town to help alleviate some congestion. The south end or the southern end of the south lot is signed now for paid parking, for downtown parking, and it provides a shuttle to downtown. So again, trying to get visitors coming into the area, to get off of Route 27, pull in and park and pay to leave their car here for the day, take a shuttle downtown, take the water taxi downtown or walk downtown. But we're leaving this area available for paid parking, again, to get cars off the road and help with that congestion. And then project 15, circularing all the way back to the Rossi Mill, is this is, we've been replacing the roof of the mill, you know, over time as certain areas need it. And so the next section for replacement is this northern half, if you will, of the mill here. So I'll just, I should have pointed out at the beginning, the mill's entirety is all of this. The boat hall is operating kind of in the front and then the roof replacement is kind of adjacent to it, running that whole length.
So I have a couple of questions.
Yep.
The parking for the public...
Yep.
Is that going to have a time limit on it? Is it just daytime parking? Because right now your parking is pretty much the hours of the Seaport being open, correct?
Correct.
Is that how it's going to continue?
Correct, yeah.
So for that particular lot, it would close at what time and be open?
Well, we don't, right now the lot technically doesn't close ever. It's just that it's there, most people leave during the day. I don't even think we have a sign for no overnight parking. There are no overnight parking? Okay, so those, no overnight parking signs would remain, but it's not like it closes and people get kicked out or towed.
But the shuttle, you're going to be going while the museum is open?
Correct.
Okay.
When you get back to your car, you've got to get back before the museum closes.
Correct.
Okay.
And the only reason I hesitate on that question a little bit, there has been discussion, again with the town of potentially, as the town's considering doing paid parking downtown, that employees need a lot to be able to park at and shuttle back and forth. And there has been discussion of letting, you know, having employees come out here and shuttle back and forth. And so then when businesses are shutting down, that shuttle would still need to run from downtown. So those are all things that need to be figured out with a lot of other individuals, so that's why I just wouldn't want to limit necessarily the time of when that paid parking happens.
So would there be any other change, any changes physically to the parking lot?
They, this season, they retard it and restriped it. That's it.
So you wouldn't have a gate or anything like that in order to pay for it?
Nope. And it was all already in operation this summer.
Was it successful this summer?
Let's see how it goes. So yes, again, we are operating in conjunction with Lars Parking and actually they are the ones that are taking on the bits at this point in time and they're putting the shuttle and I don't think we're to profit on at this point in time, but they're going to continue for this summer until, and I think when the town may bring in paid parking, we might finally become more and more popular.
This summer, yes. Good, thank you.
And I just, just again, just the access, how to get to that area in the parking lot is only from 27. You don't have to go up one of the side screens?
Oh, no, 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 100%. Right in the main entrance, nothing changes.
In the neighborhoods?
In the neighborhood at all. We're not circling, we're not leaving any other way.
Okay.
It's 100% you come in. The only thing basically is paid parking downtown, you turn left, visitor to the Seaport, you turn right when you get in through the driveway.
And the paid parking needs a ticket, that's to get Lars to use the shuttle or the taxi for your charge. That's where, that's where the, well, for the price of being able to park, that's how it is.
And then the pocket park?
Yep.
So that remains part of the museum?
Correct.
And the maintenance would be part of the museum as well? And you said there might be an artifact or something put, put their statue or something like that, but no signage?
No signage, I mean, there would be interpretive signage, but it wouldn't be like welcome to the Seaport. You know, there would be some attribution, I'm sure, that it's a Seaport property, but we definitely want visitors to know where the main entrance is. We would not want to put any signage down there that would give anybody the impression that that's where they should go for the front door.
Okay, well, can we see more objectives instead of, because now... Because not a fact, so it's historically belongs to us, we're not allowed to put that outside.
Oh.
It would be, it would be an object.
Some kind of object.
Good clarification.
For my team, it's ended for me.
And there'd be no lighting or anything associated with that?
We have not proposed any lighting, and we would obviously, whatever, at this point, it's the concept, it's the master plan. As we develop what the real plans are, we would obviously bring them back to Keith. And if lighting or something triggered that we need to come back, we would be coming back for an administrative review.
Okay. And you would go forward with this, whether the town adopted the proposals that are on the table for parking, et cetera, and some of the changes to those streets?
We would like to do it in conjunction with the town, because obviously, where we put that sidewalk matters. We don't want to just put it right on the property line and then force the hand of the town to, you know, not be able to do parallel parking. So we've come up, like I said, we've come up with some plans of what we think it could be and the road can be, and we need to work that through with the town. This is our promise to the community that we want to be the good neighbor, and we think there's a good opportunity there, and we're willing to take the responsibility for what they can control.
Okay. It's just difficult because they're not coming, you know, it's not all happening at the same time.
Correct.
So I totally understand where you're going.
Correct. But that's, that's all, I can't tell you what, exactly. Yep. And again, at a master plan level, it's that high level, here's the big project, and then if we need a site plan, we'd obviously do that with a site plan with further detail. But we have to do the master plan first.
Thank you.
Yep. Any other questions? I was going to run through the impact statements real quick.
I do have one other question.
Sure.
The sign.
Yep.
You have this thing about signs. So on the mill, how big did you say it was?
Hundred and fifty-two square feet.
A hundred and fifty-two square feet?
Yep.
And it'll be facing?
It'll be facing, it'll be affixed to, to the building. So facing directly out. It's not hanging out, it's not protruding out, it's just literally a banner affixed to the wall.
Okay.
Yes. Big curtain.
The long, the long, the length of the building?
Not a lot, well, I mean, it's just that final corner. Hundred and fifty-two square feet sounds really big, it's going to look kind of small.
Twelve by twelve or?
Yeah. Yeah, it basically is.
Right.
It's one window, it's the space between the corner and the window bed.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yep. So fiscal impacts really quick.
I have one question.
Oh, yeah.
I saw this today, as a matter of fact, this Senate bill, six sixty.
Yeah. I saw it today, too.
Is there any?
Haven't heard anything about it. Have, nobody has contacted us about it.
Nothing, because it says water taxi and?
It does, yes.
But no?
It was news to everybody. And I would say, when I saw that, I mean, that Stonington has done a big multimodal study, maybe ten years ago, fifteen at max, that talked about those things. So I don't, I don't know where that idea came from. So waivers really quickly.
You have a question, Chuck?
I do have a question.
Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry, just came up.
First, I think, I think the presentation would have benefited greatly from use of the projector. You know, for, for people that aren't familiar, and I am not that familiar, I've been in town for like seven years, and I've been to the seaport a bunch of times. I'm nowhere near as familiar as some of these people that have lived here all their lives. And looking at that, it doesn't help me, so.
Sure.
And I'm sure some of these other folks feel the same way. You know, it would have benefited from something where you could have zoomed in on each one of these sites, you know, and the video would greatly help in future. So not to beat up on you, but if you could, for future presentations. So you guys are so good in coming back to us for all the details. It would, it would be a much better presentation if you could zoom in on each one of these fifteen sites. Second point is, you're requesting a couple of waivers.
Yep.
And I'm sure your attorney's going to talk about the waivers. But the waiver, one of the waivers deals with a waiver of drainage and utility requirements, a public works infrastructure waiver. Yet, the town engineer has asked for all kinds of requirements with regard to drainage and detention studies and detention of, I'm sure, post-development runoff increases. So, you know, somehow you're going to have to address that so that we feel comfortable in granting the waiver. The other waiver is for a traffic analysis, and the police commission is asking questions about, you know, pedestrian movements and pedestrian safety, a topic very much involved these days in many cities around Connecticut. So my question is, is, are any of these pedestrian improvements going to actually increase the number of movements across Route twenty-seven to a point where we're going to have to increase the time allocated to the pedestrian phases?
Short answer is no. We don't, we don't believe so. Longer, a little bit longer answer is, we did have a fairly robust discussion with the police commission about all those movements. In the end, they voted, or they just took this position that no change was necessary. But what we did talk about here was, was the traffic and that intersection in particular. There was a perception that the seaport is causing a great deal of traffic out here and significantly increasing all the traffic on Route twenty-seven, which is true to a point. However, I would say, we also have, that's our lovely chart of attendance from 2020 to 2022. So in the last twenty years, attendance has gone from four hundred thousand to two hundred and twenty-six thousand. So we've lost about half the attendance of the seaport. So the, the point being, traffic along Route twenty-seven, from a seaport perspective, has been double what it currently is in the past. Not saying there's not a traffic issue out there, but, but we don't feel that it's solely the responsibility of the seaport. Likely, we then looked at the traffic counts, the DOT data out there, and everybody that I talked to says, man, traffic on twenty-seven is worse than it's ever been. Right? And so we went and looked at the traffic counts. The traffic counts for, they have two sections that they count. One is kind of the north and one is the south. And we'll, we'll kind of discount 2020 because we know that that data is not an outlier. But looking at 2021, which is the latest data published, we're at a fifteen-year low from actual daily traffic volumes being calculated on Route twenty-seven. But all of us experience what we think is significantly more traffic along Route twenty-seven. And what we're suggesting is that it's probably the management of those signalized intersections that are not currently operating as they probably should, and that DOT can make some minor improvements and make traffic flow through there much better. And it's interesting you bring up the pedestrian timing, because what we've noticed over, at some point in the last two years, DOT changed the timing and the sensitivity of these lights.
Of which, of which lights?
This is the north lights.
Just that, they just changed?
Well, that's what, as of right now, we know that the most. If you were to come, and as you're coming across the Thompson Building, and you hit that button to crosswalk, it instantly changes the light. There is no pedestrian queue whatsoever. And likewise, if you're leaving, the same thing happens. And likewise, when you're in your vehicle and you go to leave, as soon as you trip that, it trips right away. There's never a queue of cars or a queue of pedestrians. What that's doing is great for people trying to cross the road, but it means it's stopping traffic on Route twenty-seven for every single pedestrian instead of stacking pedestrians.
Yeah, the queuing, the queuing is much worse.
It's horrible, right? So, and then that queuing effect, you know, this is linked to the next light to the north and to the south, and so it's messing up everything. So our suggestion is, is that we work with the police commission to help DOT or to suggest to DOT that they do improvements to the management of those two intersections, so traffic will flow through much better. Because the data right now says, visitors are down, traffic volume is down, but traffic seems much worse. And so we think it's a management issue.
So that's a fifteen-year trend, and it's not just COVID-related?
No.
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 Okay, so that addresses the pedestrian traffic question.
Yep.
How about the town engineer issues, where he's requesting all kinds of, you know, drainage information with respect to, I think mostly detention?
Well, so he was, it was mostly, he asked two things, water quality volume, which we did not provide, because honestly, what we're doing right here is the equivalent of a small sidewalk expansion. Right? It's, all we're doing is, is a stairway that's, you know, twenty by twenty and a pavers outside of it. And there's nowhere for that water, we can't shed it towards the building. We don't want to shed it all out onto the road, so we put it in permeable pavement. And what he is requesting is that, let's do a water quality volume, which we know we can, we exceed the one-inch water quality volume for capacity within the pavers. And then what he was asking is, should we under-drain that and connect it into the rest of the system?
So there are civil plans for this project?
Correct.
Okay. And they've been submitted to the town engineer?
We have told the town engineer, we'll work with him to satisfy all of his comments.
Okay.
So we can clearly meet any of his?
I'm fine with that. That's fine. Thank you.
Perfect. And to go through those, the waivers, hopefully kind of quickly, there's a fiscal impact waiver, we're asking a waiver from, basically because this is a nonprofit, private property owned by a nonprofit, minor changes to municipal responsibility, there's no increase in police or fire or sewage, there's no residential component, so no new school age children, any ancillary services are provided by the owner and not by the town. And so we don't anticipate any new development outside of the seaport because of this. So we're asking a waiver for the fiscal. Then the traffic, as you, as you mentioned, this, you know, plan to put in the boat hall was already approved once with a waiver for traffic. We, it's, we feel it's the exact same project, it's just orientated differently within the building, so that a waiver should be, we think, granted, again, again, all the modifications are happening inside, we don't anticipate any changes to any flow, whether vehicular or pedestrian. We are working on plans to suggest, along with that signalization improvements, to suggest pedestrian improvements to that intersection, but it's a hundred percent DOT land, so all we can do is make suggestions at this point.
Excuse me, Chad.
Yeah.
On the south entrance, crossing Route twenty-seven.
Yep.
That pedestrian push button is much, that one does have a much greater delay.
A queue, probably an appropriate queue.
And it queues up people to cross at once and then traffic to cross it, to flow at once.
Yep.
So that's, I hadn't really focused that the north one is so sensitive and the south one is more adequate.
Yeah. And so I really think that's, when I look at the data, that's what it's telling.
That's part of the issue.
It's a management issue and not a roadway.
Well, then you have to factor in the traffic light at Mistux at Ave, because sometimes that doesn't.
Probably benefit from synchronization, too.
That's what I'm saying, because sometimes that one clogs up the worst.
Yep.
All the way up to the south entrance.
It sounds like, it sounds like the police commission is going to meet with DOT to address these issues, which, which are largely not, if you're making.
Right. And we want to be a partner in helping them, as is evidenced by most of the projects we're presenting. And we, we're the ones that suggested to them, we think this is probably the problem, and it's kind of light bulbs of, oh, that, you know, because everybody, it's easy to blame, oh, there's traffic, traffic is bad, it must be all this great development. And we want, I always say, traffic problem is a great problem to have, because that means people want to be there. But it means we have to manage it so we don't scare people from coming back again. Sorry. Next waiver, so the roads and drainage, again, we can, we can meet all of the engineers' comments. This is such a tiny, minuscule site plan for this tiny little piece, we don't think it's worth a full-on roads and drainage impact. That's for master plans of subdivisions and much larger projects. Public utilities, waiver requested. Again, we've had comments back from WPCA that they basically have no real issue, we know there's, they will be able to accommodate it, and their one comment, I think, was to make sure that we can remove it during a storm, which we can definitely do. Natural resources, again, we're not impacting any views or view sheds, wetlands, aquifers, trees, endangered species, critical habitats, landforms, slopes, soils, agriculture, any of that, so we're asking for a waiver on that. And then lastly, is the, the cultural impact, we are not asking for a waiver on. Quite honestly, this is the reason we're doing this, you know, the project with Rossi Mill. We think Rossi Mill is incredibly important historical asset to the town. The neighborhoods around it wouldn't be here if it wasn't for Rossi, right? When this was, when Rossi was built, it was in eighteen ninety-eight, and we put in a tariff on silk, and it was cheaper to come build a mill here instead of trying to pay that tariff and import your silk. And the way they did that was to just bring in the entire company overseas and build a mill. They then brought in their employees, both masons to build things and then people to operate, and that's what built the neighborhood around. And that's why we have that historic district specific to the Rossi Mill. So the preservation of the Rossi Mill is entirely what this project is for. We need to be able to do adaptive reuse to that mill so that we can invest in it and upgrade it to be able to continue to protect it in the future. So we, we think, you know, that's a great cultural, this project should be a great cultural impact by preserving what is a very prominent and important mill in town. And then not all, of course, showcasing all the beautiful artifacts or objects that the museum does have, because there's thousands of them that are in here that are not visible or open to the public to be able to see. And to be able to create the space to rotate in those exhibits is pretty crucial. Let's see, we definitely think, you know, it's improving the heritage and the character of Stonington, it's compatible with public views and the character of the surrounding neighborhood. We're, again, trying to minimize the impact of that building as much as possible, didn't put on a massive new entry or anything like that, just as small as possible. Reinforcement of the existing street and building patterns, absolutely, we're not trying to encroach or push or change the mass. Protection of compatibility with local significant historic sites, that's exactly what this project is. And then archaeologically, there are no significant resources found on this side. So that's longer than I intended to go, but, yep.
One more, couple, there's quite a list from the deputy fire marshal and the fire inspector.
There is.
Are you going to be able to meet and talk with them and iron out all those issues?
We provided a response to Keith about that. The short answer is yes, we can, we can comply. The longer answer is, he reviewed these plans like they were building permit plans. And there's a definite difference between a master plan, a site plan, and building permits. And so at a master plan level, and even the site plan level, we never get into, you know, fire extinguishers and the size of the piping and all that sort of stuff. So most, if not all, of those comments are really building permit, and will be definitely addressed during the building permit, we have to meet them. And the only site one was the trees.
Right.
And we said we'd be, and he just asked that we meet with them and kind of talk about it so they can better understand if that might be an impact to their apparatus as they come to an emergency. So we're happy to meet and, and adjust as needed.
How about the sprinkler system? That seemed to be?
So obviously, anything, anything that happens within the portion of Rossi that gets upgraded has to be brought up to code and has to have the appropriate?
When you do your building permit.
Right. And we won't get a building permit without.
Okay, thank you. It just looked quite official, I didn't.
It's quite the list. But, but again, I think, you know, he reviewed it like a building permit as opposed to a master plan, site plan.
Thank you.
All right. Any more questions for me? I'm going to pass it over to Mark, and he can cover.
Just one more question.
One more?
Yep.
Does the public water system have the capacity to handle the fire suppression? Is there a letter?
Yes.
Is there a letter from Aquaria?
Not for this project specifically, but there are two, they just put in a new main two years ago. There was, there was an existing main out there, which with plenty of service for everything that the seaport needs and expansion of the new Delamar, and then a whole new service just put in the road right before they repaved. So we believe there's.
So there must be tanks and jockey pumps and everything associated with that, correct?
Yeah. And like, again, brand-new main line put in all the way down Route twenty-seven recovery.
So, Ken Wilson?
Please, can you please use the microphone?
In order to make a record of the meeting, they have to pick it up on the recording. Thank you. Ken Wilson, Director of Facilities for the Seaport. So the building is currently fully sprinkled. What Chris is requesting in that report is that we go through the sections of the building that have not yet been updated. So there are three, basically the building has five different sprinkler systems within it. Three have been fully updated. The area, the area of the boat hall and the area of the proposed roof restoration have yet to been updated. Those are the two sections of the mill he's referring to. There's adequate water pressure. When the CRC was built in 1998, there was a whole new water service brought into the building. That serves as the main distribution for the entire fire suppression within the building currently.
Okay. So there are no pressure, or with the pressure you addressed, what about bio?
So currently we have a combination of wet and dry systems in the building because there are, there are heated areas and non-heated areas. We don't have any.
No storage tanks?
No, there's no storage tanks. There's no jockey pumps. There's none of that. We're straight up.
All serviced directly from the fire service in the road?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for me? You can ask again in a minute, but I'll let Mark go through architecture.
Here's where it would be nice. Hi, I'm Mark Camo, architect. I live spitting distance from the Seaport. So very familiar with the area. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight about this project. As is commonly unknown in, in, I think, in the, in the Greater Mystic area, that the Seaport has in storage in the back over here, about 400 of the country's most important maritime vessels. And not really on display to sea. And the, the, the objective here is to put them on display in the exhibit hall. The previously approved exhibit hall, as Chad mentioned, has been pivoted. And there's, there's a number of reasons for that pivot. One has to do with the structure. Part of the structure has a sawtooth roof. The other part of the structure has a steel roof. But also, the structure is a part of it. Other favorability that, that, that makes it want to rotate is the space itself and what it is adjacent to inside the rest of the mill. Because depending on uses, you have to separate them a certain way according to the fire code. So this is favorable to do it that way. Another part of it is how the boats go from where they are to come into the space. The circulation of the boats. And one of the kingpins of the whole design that we have is, is the new entrance onto the front of the mill. I, I would say that I call this version 7A. We went, because there are some, there's some six As and six Bs and other, other iterations that, that have, that have been presented with this. Some of them were more corruptive, I'll use the word, to the west facade of the mill on Lehmanville Avenue. They, that, the, the early part of that design was to make more of a celebratory announcement of the entrance and the new use of this corner of the mill. And we, we went down the garden path of, of arguing the, the pros and cons of those entrances. Only to come out with this particular design. And what I want to point out first of all is that 36,000 square feet is large. And most of the time, I can say that, but no, because I have any idea what 36,000 square feet is. There's not, there's not a room in Lehmanville, or in my school, or in here. When you, when you, when you walk into a room that has, that is that large with these vessels on display, you can't come through a door like that. You've got to come through something, you know, a little more prominent. So, so that explosion of these boats and the dramatic effect that it was going to have as an exhibit was a big part of it. And this corner is, is really the place for that to happen. And this corner also anchors what we see as, as the third leg of the tripod that started with the Thompson Building, that will become the Delmar Hotel. And now this part of the corner as well. So this, so the corner is going to be quite, quite an active place. And, and so the, the designing for that. Basically, let's move to this one first. It, it leaves the west facade of Rossi Mill as it is. It's not touching, not a big discussion. It tacks onto the south elevation though. You can see it from inside, which is good. It tacks onto the south elevation on an almost 30-foot sweeping staircase that takes you up into the mill. The ingress that we designed into the mill was simply taking the first big double window, window portals and removing them. The, the two on the left, you sweep up the stair and you walk right into those windows removed. And you're in the, you're in the mill, but you're still in the open air. It's not closed off at that point. Because there's a glass testament in there that actually closes it off from, from the weather. The other part of this and part of the gyrations that we went through in designing the entrance was accessibility. Not only accessibility from a gay point of view, but what uses, most of the time with a use like this, what uses the handicap accessible routes more than non-impulsory people are families controlled. So we use them all the time. So we, we have an 80-plus foot long handicap amen once upon a time stretching across the mill and just he faces the building. So the mill doesn't have a tower, and that's a pretty rare thing. I, I've looked through very old pictures of the mill. There were, it looked like rain silos in front of it. At one point, I don't know what that object was, from, from the 1910, I think the photograph was. But, but I did want to, first of all, department, as you know, the apartment interior does not like additions on historic buildings to make false pretenses. So trying to be the mill, that wasn't the point. The point was to try to borrow from the palette of materials and forms. So, so the grass staircase, the symbol is granite. And there is, we had to be found both on the original foundation and on the original portal that has plenty of granite blocks that they built in and that made archway that determined to be with the, with the brick. The tower is the elevator tower. And what we did was we encased it in glass and columns. And the columns are, are basically 20 inch by 20 inch cast in place concrete columns that are cased with two-inch thick bushhammer granite, so natural material. And then glass. And so you'll see the elevator going up and down. You'll see the people going up and down the stairs. And I think it's very congruent with, if you want, if you want the 20-inch history on the mill. Rudy Fabretti, Nancy Harp, a therapist from UConn, gives a great EAD talk July 2019 at the National Piper. And he talks about, you can see his face later, because he talks about as a child, the, the horn going off at 8:00 and then 12:00 and then 1:00 and then 5:00. And the activity of the mill. And I kind of see that we're going to put that, I think we're going to put that activity back into the corner of the mill. Because what is it now? Just a brick backdrop that no one even knows what's going on in there for the less populous townspeople. But I think the entrance will, will really let this, let the mill take its place in the tripod of the Delmar, the Thompson Building and this part of it. And it'll give us that granite entrance that you need to explode you into 36,000 square feet, the best vessel in the world. And it takes you there safely and, and allow the handicap access as well. So we're using stone, plain granite. We, we, the mill was once, the, the tower was once higher and it was once ceiling glass and much more modern. And I'll kind of whack around to that. So it's, it's really been pulled back, the whole, the whole thing has been pulled back to a much more modest vernacular, if you will, that I think in the end will not only respect the mill and the architectures that were inherited here, but I think will contribute it as the 2023.
Very good explanation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Gary, you have a question?
No.
I will point out two things. One is the German club was part of the immigrants coming over to be part of the mill, which I mentioned, people always say, why is it the German club? And I, I did not know that until I went to a presentation about the boathouse. And secondly, I, very personal, I think this is wonderful to display the small craft collection because it is one of the most impressive collections absolutely in the United States, if not the world. And that's actually what brought me here to Mystic 100 years ago, was to work with the guy who created that collection. So my hat's off to you people for displaying it. Any other questions? Thank you, Mark.
So thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, again, for the record. My name is John Casey. I just want to have a few comments just to, to wrap up, hit a couple other points. First, one of the, one of the considerations is compliance with the Stonington Plan of Conservation and Development and the Comprehensive Plan. Here, I'm very fortunate that you have a planner who's on top of things. Because all I get to say is, I think Keith did a great job pointing out the, the policies in your P O C D that apply. And I think an analysis of those show why this is consistent. I don't think I need to gild the lily on that. I, I think it, he explains it very well in his, in his staff report. Same with the Comprehensive Plan, which is really just your, your regulations. And I will echo his concluding remarks, which is the department's planning opinion is that the proposal conforms to the Comprehensive Plan. And that the general pattern of development is unchanged by this application. So there's some technical, you know, on the regulation side requirements that I think we hit. I always leave a place in my outline for responses to any comments from DEEP. But as far as I know, there was no comments from DEEP.
We never did get a letter?
No.
Okay. That was one of my questions.
So, which tells me as someone who works a lot with DEEP, that no news is good news.
You left him speechless, huh?
We left him speechless, yeah. No, we, I think everyone here, everyone understands that if DEEP had a concern, we would have heard about it. So. So with that, just, I think we'll wrap up. We've hit all our points. I want to thank you again for your attention. I guess we, we've gone on for a while. And we would just ask that you approve the master plan amendment and site plan approvals as stated in the application. Thank you very much. We look forward to comments from the public and the opportunity to, to answer any questions they have.
Okay. Thank you. So looking at the sign up sheet, we have Stephen Hobeke, 19 Velvet Lane. You're up. Can you pass those quarters to the other?
I'm Steve Hobeke, 19 Velvet Lane. It was in, I, I went to the neighborhood meeting for the Seaport, so I've heard this. And my, I certainly don't have an objection to most of what the Seaport said. My objection is to bring in the tourists over to the other side of Route 27 in a significant way. I have really two principal objections to that. One is I think it'll make traffic worse on 27. Tourists coming down from the parking lot and hitting the light at the Rossi Pentway. They cross the street, they go into the Seaport and they hit it again and come back. With this situation, when you have a major exhibit just to the north, across the street, across Rossi Pentway, they're going to come down, press the light, cross over Rossi Pentway, come out, press the button again, they'll get the light. Every time the light goes on in 27, it's about 32 seconds traffic being stopped. And they give the pedestrian 26, roughly 26 seconds to get across the street. So the pedestrian goes across the street again and then presses the light to go over to, to the Seaport across Route 27, and then they have to press the button and come back. So instead of two times, it's going to be four times. So from my experience, the traffic backs up on 27 in the summer, especially the weekends. I've seen it as far as the entrance to the Elm Ridge, the Elm Ridge Cemetery. And sometimes further south, and on the south side, it's normally always at Mistucket Avenue. There's just a line of traffic all the way to Rossi Pentway. So I, I don't see how we're not going to impact the traffic. And just as an aside, you were, you were talking about EDA compliance. The distance across 27 is shorter than Rossi Pentway. So I was eyeballing it and I was wondering if a person with a walker would have enough time to get across Rossi Pentway with heavy traffic. But that's, that's just a thought. I don't know. You guys will have experts from DOT looking at that. My se, my second objection is parking. Parking this summer wasn't too bad in the north lot. There was maybe a day or two where it's a lot of cars, but generally okay. Prior to COVID, there were issues. It didn't, it didn't happen every weekend. It happened when the Seaport had a special exhibit. I left copies of this with the chairman and Keith. But what you can see here is all the traffic coming out of the north lot and going on to Velvet Lane. They just park. It's like an extension to the parking lot. Here's another picture. I, I'll leave this, this with you guys too. So lots of cars coming out, parking on Velvet. And of course, they're parking also on Seaport property. Here's a picture where the cars lined up differently. And this guy's parked in front of our mailbox. Yeah, here, here's another picture. I have one more. But you can, you can see here from these pictures, Velvet Lane is very tight. It's normally, you know, you have more room. Now it's just enough room for one car to get through. And, you know, if somebody's coming off 27 into Velvet Lane, they can't really back up into Route 27 again. They have to stop and for cars coming down Velvet Lane, they have, you know, this, the guy will have to back up or find somewhere to scoot over. It's difficult. And planning and zoning weighed in previously and said, "Seaport, don't allow these tourist cars to empty out in Velvet Lane." So this has been ignored. And my concern is it gets worse in the future. And then my third comment is, I did talk to Admiral Thiessen when he was here many years ago. He said, basically, the Velvet Mill, at that time, his plan was to have it as cold storage. So I'm sure they had the conservation there in the books. But at least back then, when, this is around the time they paved the north parking lot. They put the, you know, the buses there. You know, his thought was cold storage. So at that time, I said, fine, cold storage sounds good. Currently, the Seaport gives special, you know, if you call, you can get a tour of the boat collection. But it's not massive amounts of tourists coming across the street and looking at it. So that's my concern, just the impact on traffic, the impact on parking in the neighborhood. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Could I ask you a question?
Do you have a question?
Yes. Thanks for your comments. Are there any no parking signs issued on Velvet Lane at all?
No. No, there's, next to the Velvet Mill, there's two-hour parking Monday through Friday, and that's it. And of course, that's not followed. I mean, people just park. And so, no.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Does anybody want?
We have copies. Thank you.
Yeah, circulate my copy.
Okay, there you go.
Thank you.
But James Tennant?
Jim Tennant, 6 Hinckley Street. I'm in a butter in two places, from the Mystic Seaport, direct butter. I've been there about 40 years, I guess. Traffic, traffic, traffic. I think it's a synchron, synchronization, synchronization problem. And it's the worst it's ever been. As far as the project itself is concerned, I think it's great. But as the architect had said, there's going to be a lot more pedestrian traffic around the end of Rossi Pentway. And with, if you've got the, you've got the park going in, Boathouse Project, I guess you call it, or if that's going in, and you've got a hotel going in across the street, there's going to be a lot more congestion. And you've got, you, you can't put off making a decision about what you're going to do about traffic over there. This is just going to increase the situ, make the situation that much worse. So I can appreciate that these people want to go ahead and get this approved tonight. But as far as I'm concerned, let's have a plan for, for, for the traffic situation over there. That's all I have to say, and I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Mary, and I'm not sure how to pronounce the last name. It's.
Hendricks.
Hendricks. Thank you.
Hi. I live 20 Rossi Street. I have to agree with the traffic challenges. I mean, I know COVID probably, you know, people didn't go to the Seaport so much, but they certainly were taking Route 27 to go to the restaurants and everything that's downtown. So it's just that we don't have a lot of ways to get into town. It is a real challenge. And I think parking. And I think parking is a huge challenge. And I mean, I'm glad that the Seaport's trying to think out some things, but I think they need even, they need a lot more help from the town. I, I'm a little bit worried about that parking lot in the south lot. So the neighborhood was put on a national register in the early 2000s. I had to remind the town that we did have a national register district for many years. And I'm thrilled that tonight, you were talking about Rudy Favretti. I'm thrilled that you were talking about the German Club. I mean, these are things that I've been, like, researching, and I'm just so happy to hear that part of it. I think it's a delicate area because the road is narrow. I think that you've got to think, for future reference, there's got to be parking closer to the highway. And you have to start thinking in that direction. This little parking lot in the south lot, there's no fencing. It's going to make pretty, the people on William Street kind of frustrated. And I don't think it's going to do much for, you know, the long run. So I wish the town would think about purchasing or figuring out ways of shuttling from the highway and then going, you know, having people get into town that way. I, the last question I had is, I, I saw the difference between the facade of the Velvet Mill, which I am thrilled that it's being fixed up. And I'm, I'm a huge fan of the town understanding the, what, the book, Rudy Favretti's book, Jumping the Puddle, is about all the immigration that came to the town at the turn of the century, and that's the basis of the German Club. I'm thrilled that the, the Seaport is appreciating that and that they're working closely with the Connecticut Historical Commission, which is now called SHPO. So the, the last question, did SHPO approve the final facade? I mean, is it approved by SHPO?
Can you address the question? Can you address the question up here, and then they'll answer during the rebuttal?
I'm sorry.
Because I couldn't hear.
So SHPO is like the new name of what used to be the Connecticut Historical Commission?
Right.
And I'm wondering if the new facade on the mill has been approved by SHPO?
We'll find out.
Okay.
Great.
So that's it, that's what I got.
Okay.
Thank you.
Are there any other general comments, or? Yes, one more? Round two?
My neighbor Steve said that there was bus parking in the north parking lot. That's incorrect. There's bus parking behind the mill.
Right.
There's no, no bus parking in the north parking lot.
Right, that's what I remember. It was out back, right? Up on, up, sir, by the, up the hill a little bit. Thank you. Any other general comments? Okay. Rebuttal time.
For the record, John DC for the Seaport, I'll try to kind of put our responses, or put my responses sort of in somewhat of a order, understanding that we had no way to know what, what comments would come through. But I'll start with the, I mean, with the concept that the Seaport should be restricted or somehow limited to having its visitors stay on the west side of Route twenty seven. This was specifically, one, the idea of a boathall in Rossi Mill's already been approved. So I want to make sure this commission respects that prior decision of this commission. I don't want to say that ship has sailed. But we understand the concern. When we were here before, we went through those issues. And the reason it was approved, and maybe members of the public aren't aware of this, is that in the regulations that cover this district, there's a specific provision regarding Rossi Mill. And I'll just read it into the record. It's zoning regulation seven point twenty, point two, point four. And it says Rossi Mill constitutes an historic mill site in the town of Stonington and is appropriate for adaptive reuse. Such uses may include a conference center, overnight accommodations, and special exhibition space in addition to other uses allowed on the east side of Greenville Avenue. And it says the Rossi Mill shall be defined as the museum-owned property north of Rossi Pentway and south of Velvet Lane. So that's the regulation the boathall was approved under in 2019. That's the basis for this approval. And as sort of threaded throughout our presentation and our application materials, the, the purpose and what the Seaport is there to do is to display and really showcase our maritime heritage. And we have this amazing collection of boats that is just locked away. It may have been at one time that a prior president of the Seaport was okay with that. But as I started tonight with, the whole purpose of this zone is to allow the Seaport to evolve. And as new visions come out, to, to present those visions and to make changes to the Seaport consistent with the regulations. And that's what we're here to do. I'll let Chad talk about people crossing the street. I think we touched on that. But I want to make sure that everyone is just aware that, of, of the basis for why this could happen in the mill at all. So with that, I'll turn it over to Chad.
We have the last question answered about CHPO?
Oh, so, yeah, a good question. So there actually really is no legal requirement that SHPO approve this. If they were funding it, they would have a say. But they're not. So it's really just a matter of this commission, through the architectural, you know, with the insight of your architecture.
So there's no legal basis that you have to submit your plans to them for review?
There's no, no legal basis for that.
Thank you.
Did you submit your plan?
I think there was some discussions with the Seaport staff about it, but it was informal and non-binding. So I wasn't part of that.
I'll just say that there is no formal process to submit to SHPO unless you have to submit to SHPO. And because there's no jurisdictional requirement right now, we have not. Liz Shapiro, the director, did come down and tour it and thought it was a worthy project and a good adaptive reuse. That's not a formal decision because there's no formal application. It's just, you know, a discussion. And so unless we were to apply for money from them, they don't have a jurisdiction for us to be able to submit something for them to approve or deny. We feel we're meeting the, the standards of, you know, the national requirements, both Connecticut and national, being extremely, as everything Mark talked about, being extremely minimalistic, trying to minimize the, the touch. Basically make it so that all we're really doing is taking those three windows and expanding them so people can walk through. Everything else, if, if this didn't go forward, or we wanted to reverse the decision, this just comes off and the building stays effectively unchanged. And so we took great lengths, as Mark indicated, the one, you know, handicap ramp. We had a ramp, a switchback that went from the corner all the way to a ramp and then back and back again, right? And covered the entire facade, trying to get ramps to work. And so that's why we opted to the, the elevator. So definitely a lot of attention, but we're kind of dancing the question because SHPO is, you know, a known entity, but we can't submit to them because we're not getting any funding from them, so they can't approve or deny. So, and I don't want to put words in their mouth one way or the other. What I would say, just the grading plan, I just flipped to it so that from a pedestrian concern, right, as people are worried about it might make traffic worse crossing. What we fully anticipate, and the reason I answered that, we don't think traffic, pedestrian traffic's going to be any worse, is because this is on the route back and forth to the campus already. And so anybody that's, we don't expect somebody's going to come across the campus, come back here, go back to the campus, and go back again. So multiple crossings, right? You're, if you're parking in the north lot, we have now a crosswalk across Pentway that's far enough away from the light so that you have the visual requirements so that cars can see people on the crosswalk. We have an island in the middle, and we're breaking the island for a pedestrian respite in the middle, so you only have to cross one lane of traffic, have a safe haven, make sure there's no traffic leaving, and cross the other half. So it's actually, doesn't, you don't have to push the light, it doesn't cause any traffic concerns at the intersection. So you can come right from north parking, a crosswalk straight across, come and experience. And then ideally, we're working with DOT to try to get that third leg straight across so that you don't have to do a diagonal and go to the, the front entry.
How far, how far east is that second crosswalk up the Pentway?
This way?
East.
Oh, east, this way?
It's across from the turnout?
Yeah.
To the, okay.
Yeah, it's kind of at the confluence of all the, as everything comes off from that parking lot, it's right there and goes across. There's actually, it's the end of the, the bus drop off.
What sheet are you on?
I am on L five.
Thank you.
So there's, there's an existing bus drop off, there's an existing ADA ramp already there. We're just occupying that and then coming across in a diagonal to come in right before the dock, the loading dock that goes down into the basement of the mill. So, so that's why we don't think there's going to be any pedestrian, significant increase in pedestrian traffic. Also, what we saw from Thompson, if I went back to that graph on, on attendance, there was like a barely a blip when Thompson opened. And there, we highlighted a couple other times, like the Mayflower and a couple other big openings. And you kind of just didn't even really see it in the attendance. So the expectation is this is not somehow going to solve all of the museum's problems and put 200,000 more people at the museum. We think it's the same amount of people that are coming today come tomorrow. They just have one more exhibit space to be able to go to and see more opportunities as they're coming and going. It's not going to be a massive increase of, of visitation. So that's the other reason why we don't think it's going to pedestrian, cause pedestrian conflicts or vehicular conflicts. Let's see here. Parking on Velvet and the egress back onto Velvet, definitely a management issue, right? A, a parking management, the Seaport is happy to be a partner in what is the right solution. The Seaport doesn't own that road and can't by right put up signs and block people. They can encourage their staff not to park there and park in the lots because that was an issue that we did deal with probably like ten years ago, where the staff were parking there. And we said, I think that's probably why the limit went into effect, was to get staff to make sure they don't park there. Happy to, you know, continue to enforce that. And then happy to work with the police commission and the neighbors to find an appropriate management for, for Velvet Lane to make sure that it's not causing undue problems. I agree, it's a small lane. We don't try to cycle people out there at all. And we, we kind of hide it, if you will, from that whole back parking lot so that the public doesn't know that that's the way out. Most people that get out, they have to really know here and live here and been in that lot long enough to know they can kind of sneak through and get out that back way. So, so we'd be definitely in support of, of helping, you know, reduce the parking problems or whatever signage or management is necessary. See what else was there? Pedestrian traffic, vehicular traffic. And then I would just, you know, to some of Mary's comments, happy to, I fully agree. We want to work with the town for some of the, if there's the ability to get more parking further north, get more traffic off the road even before they get here. Happy to be a part of that discussion. You know, even when it comes to the, the water taxi, we've talked about it going south. There's nothing to stop it from going north if there's another place that it can connect to further up and get people off the road before they even get here. That'd be fantastic. You know, and I would just say, most of what I heard, I understand neighborhood frustrations. We try to work with them quite a bit. We can't force the town to do anything on their roads. We can only do what we can do within the parking lots. But we're happy to work with them and come up with solutions that we can suggest, just like we're doing further south, to suggest improvements for Velvet Lane as well. And I think that addressed most of it.
Wins?
So first off, I totally agree with you about Velvet Lane and the need to go to the police commission for signs, if that's what's necessary.
Can I just point out that the photographs you're showing here is before my time? So now I know it's an issue, we'll certainly work to try and solve this issue. But I don't even know to sneak through Velvet Lane, so that's.
Thank you. So the, the part of the parking lot that you're proposing be used for shuttle to go to downtown Mystic, how many spaces is that?
Oh, two seventy-five.
Two seventy-five?
Two hundred and seventy-five spaces.
Yep.
To go to shuttle down. And what's your attendance on a daily basis?
If we get lucky, it's about three thousand visitors in tight in the summer.
Okay, and you figure?
Six days a year.
That's Wooden Boat Weekend, or Wooden Boat Show?
Wooden Boat Show's four thousand. I didn't count that as any more weekend, but three thousand is kind of our height in the summer.
Okay, and then you figure two people a car, three people a car, so a thousand cars? Four people a car?
It's families, so normally we.
Okay, so maybe nine hundred cars. So, and, so it's nine hundred cars and then two hundred and seventy-five, is that what you said? Two hundred and seventy-five additional cars to be used for, you know, the parking venture? So I'm, I mean, that's more than twenty-five percent increase in the number of cars and people coming across the street. Whether you say it's because of the Seaport, okay, and attendance at the Seaport, or just the fact that you're using this as a public parking lot. And again, I, I know this is a, a definitely, an issue of concern, and everybody's desperately looking for a solution. But it's a valid point that if you use this, and we grant this for, you know, shared parking, that is an increase of over twenty-five percent.
It's already underway. It started last summer.
It's not, I don't think we can see how it's being used. Ken, you're going to go to the.
Right. Ken Wilson again from the Seaport. So the two hundred and seventy-five parking spaces in allocation to Laz for paid parking, those people get on a shuttle bus. They don't walk across Route twenty-seven at all. It's a shuttle service that Laz runs to Liz Bakery. And that's the way that people get downtown. They can walk across the street. They don't have to pay and park on the Laz side of the parking lot if they're going to the Seaport. They would park on the Seaport side of the parking lot, which is unpaid. There's about eleven hundred and forty-five parking spaces at the Seaport in total. Six hundred and fifty in the south lot, four hundred and fifty in the north lot, give or take. And we have a couple of other little ancillary lots that float around. The average UL time for a visitor to the Seaport is about three hours. So those parking lots turn over on average twice a day. So there's more than ample parking to allocate two hundred and seventy-five parking spaces to Laz, even if they stayed all day. And with the remaining nine hundred spaces that are there, using your math of nine hundred cars, they would turn over twice on any given day.
And that's not actually what's happening with the visitors over the summer. What is happening is they're parking in that Laz parking lot and taking the shuttle. It's actually stops in the parking lot and takes them downtown. And then if they do visit the Seaport, yes, they would cost a vote. What's actually happening is they take the shuttle from inside the parking lot down to Liz Bakery.
Right, the shuttle stops right here at the bus stop.
That's what we found this summer.
So when you come into Laz parking lot, you pay to park there. That paid receipt gets you on the shuttle. The shuttle takes you then from your downtown to Liz Bakery. And then when you're downtown, you just get back on the shuttle, you show them your paid receipt again, and they take you back to the parking lot. And the shuttle runs continuously.
So your point is taken. You're, you're, you think, based on last summer, and did you have two hundred and seventy-five cars there last summer?
No.
Right, so, I mean, it was very little use last summer.
Well, just started.
Right, but it, but saying that, well, it's already there from last summer, you know, almost sounds like we've been doing it.
What's your point?
So my point is, I, I am very, and I do agree that there's a synchronization issue with the lights, et cetera. I totally agree with that. I mean, that just makes complete logical sense. But I, I also. But I also think that there is going to be more traffic there at that pinch point, whether it's to park the 275 cars
Which, which pinch point?
Or whether part of those people, the majority of the people will take the bus, or whether they'll walk across the street, some people, families might walk. I'm just saying, I don't think you can say it's not, that it's going to equal out to be zero. That's all I'm saying. And you have to be sensitive to it.
So, not to contradict anything that's been said previously, but the DOT is already working on this problem, okay? Last year, about a year ago, I met with the DOT. The DOT is in the process of, right now, replacing the lights at the south parking lot. And during the process that we talked about, we had to sell them additional right away because they're putting up new light stations and so forth. We talked about the timing and the queuing, and the difference of the timing of the two lots. If you press the button at the south lot, as was, as Lieutenant promptly previously pointed out, it does not, the light doesn't change immediately. It never did. And so it allowed the traffic to continue to pass, it allowed the resident, the visitors rather, to queue up on either side of the road, and then the light changed when people pressed. The north lot was the exception to that. When you press the button at the north lot, as Chad pointed out, the light changed almost instantaneously. And on average, you've got about three cars through the light at any given pedestrian button change. That's those, that timing at the north lot has already been changed by the DOT. It's been put on a 20-second delay to cross the sidewalk with timers, with countdown lights on them now, they've already made that change. They've already tried to improve the intersection timing to minimize the queuing differences between the two parking lots. So that, they are aware of the problem, they are working on the problem. There's nothing that we can do about it, it's a state road. I mean, we're trying to work with them, we're trying to make them aware of the problem, you know?
My understanding is the First Select woman is involved with these negotiations as well?
Yes, yes.
Single day?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, 10 years ago, when that chart showed the attendance was so much higher, what was the average? You said the top six days were 3,000 attendee? 10 years ago, what was the high?
Yeah, we have the total year, total of the date, but I don't know the daily. All of this one has the...
So, I mean, to me, seeing that, that the traffic isn't a Seaport issue, it's
It's not.
It's not a Seaport issue. It's downtown. I mean, it's just, you know, it's, when I see that, I, yeah.
I think the Seaport's an easy target for some of that stuff.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
And I'm not suggesting that it is a Seaport issue in any way, shape, or form, I'm just voicing that having those parking spaces in that area, whether it was a Seaport-owned parking lot, or somebody else owned the parking lot, I'm just saying that it's 279 cars right there, that you're going to have an increase in traffic at that point. It might not be because of the Seaport.
Respect, I disagree with you. Those 275 cars, if they pulled in here, didn't go any further south than the...
Right.
They were already on Route 27 to get here. So, and they pulled off of Route 27 at a traffic light, at a signalized intersection, in parking lot, and those people got on a shuttle bus to go downtown. That's 275 cars that did not go below Isham Street. And they're circling around downtown looking for a parking space.
Right, but I'm sure that's not comforting for the people who live on Isham Street, so.
If those people aren't on, and the cars aren't on Isham Street, man.
I think we can move along now.
I think the crux of the problem is probably more than, you know, it's illustrated that it isn't a fear-making when you look at the decrease in the number of people that are coming to the Seaport. In the same period of time, Mystic has become a huge destination.
The background traffic...
And the average daily traffic on Route 27 of people destined for downtown Mystic has increased astronomically.
Yep.
And that's why DOT is involved, because
Right.
It isn't trips that are destined for the Seaport that are an issue, they're part of it.
Do with the Seaport.
But, but the major part of the traffic on 27, its destination is not the Seaport. And I'm sure you wish it was, but it's not.
Yes.
It's, this is a destination. And the ADT on 27 is a problem for DOT. It really is. That's why the First Selectman has got them involved. And while I think you're right in that the number of pedestrian movements, because now you have activity on both sides of the street, is going to increase the number of pedestrian trips back and forth across the street. The simultaneous crosswalks can help to deal with that, but DOT has to, has to deal with the phasing of those intersections.
Right.
It really is an astronomical traffic issue. And if they're focused on it, they have to deal with it. But the making of this problem, again, is a dramatic increase in the ADT because Mystic is a destination.
Correct. Moving right along. Chad, I have one last question. Will you be able to meet the four recommendations by the flood?
By SLR?
Yeah.
Yes. Yeah.
The first floor floodplain business?
First floor is already out.
Okay, because of the historic?
Yeah, well, historic, number one, we could kind of waive everything, but the first floor literally is above the 100-year floodplain. It's the ground floor.
I was wondering about the ground floor.
The ground floor's below the basement level.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we'll do necessary requirements for flood, wet flood.
Wet flood, okay.
That's, yeah, where necessary.
Thank you. Staff, are we all guys wrapped up? Keith?
Well, anything involving the MHD, the commission's charged with looking at the statement of purpose. And the statement of purpose, and there is very long, but so the introduction to it is that the zone's intended to permit museum tourism, historical, cultural, and educational uses that preserve and enhance the town's historic character while providing opportunities for exploring the maritime heritage of the nation. The zone is intended to allow for the establishment, continuation, and expansion of such uses and activities in ways that will maintain and enhance compatibility with surrounding neighborhoods. As Attorney Casey pointed out, the Rossi Mill is specifically talked about in the statement of purpose, that it can include special exhibition space. It is sort of a little bit of an outlier to the idea that exhibit space shouldn't be on the east side of Route 27. As far as the comments received, we talked about some of them, like the flood hazard consultant in the fire department. This went before the Architectural Design Review Board. They approved it with three stipulations. More detail on the handrail include windows, window specs, and building material specs. And those have already been met, and the details submitted to the board. Town engineer had comments that we talked about, but recommended the commission take action with a stipulation that the final plans meet his review. We talked about the Police Commission's discussion of this. Recommended stipulations here, if the commission approves this, three of them that are pretty standard. Number one, just that final plans shall be recorded prior to the issuance of any zoning permits. Number two, final plans shall be reviewed to the satisfaction of the town engineer and Mystic Fire District. And three is just standard language for an erosion and sedimentation control bond, which shouldn't be too large because there's not that much physical work being done here. So as far as the individual decisions here, if I can find that.
There are five votes, I think, right?
Right.
Page 33.
Thank you. Can't find it. There's a decision on conformance with the POCD in the comprehensive plan, a decision on the waivers requested, a decision on the master plan slash zone change application, a decision on the more specific site plan application, and that's really just the Rossi Mill changes, and a decision on conformance with the coastal area management application, the CAM application.
Are those all separate motions?
They probably shouldn't be, just for clarity.
With the stipulations being rolled into the number four, the site plan?
Yeah, those all relate to the site plan.
The stipulations.
Should we add an additional stipulation, Keith, to the recommended stipulations that the applicant continue to work with DOT and the Police Commission with regard to
Absolutely.
Mitigation of the pedestrian and vehicular traffic issues on 27?
You have to talk slowly, he's taking...
I do think that makes sense. Applicant, continue to work with DOT and the Police Commission, then I lost the rest of it.
Say it slower, Chuck. He's trying to write it down as you...
So, that the app, you got it, or no?
Has half of it.
The applicant still continue to work with DOT and the Police Commission regarding
mitigation of pedestrian movement and vehicular movement issues along Route 27 adjacent to the Seaport.
You guys are comfortable with that? You comfortable with that?
Okay.
Any other questions for the applicant?
I'm just curious, the Mill that you guys have there, can people get their general admission tickets from the Mill, or do you have to? They can?
See, I'm the president. Okay, it's Peter Armstrong, so I'll just answer that question. We haven't really worked out how we're going to do the ticket, at least two years away, and 12 million dollars. So, but I suspect, we suspect at the moment, yes, it would be that you would get a general admission that would cover the whole of the Seaport, rather than just separately for the, for the Mill only.
And could you purchase, do you think you'll be able to purchase it at the Mill? I'm only thinking if it's a repeat visitor, who maybe is just going, who can go to the Seaport anytime and just wants to go over there, it'll only be a few pedestrians, but might lessen the pedestrian traffic a little bit.
Yeah, so we're looking at it being that you pay your full price, or that ticket price will be in two years' time.
Yeah.
And that will give you access to the Mill and access to the whole of the Seaport. So that, you know, and we suspect that, another thing, of course, is trying to increase the number of memberships, so you've got something new to see to become a member, so you can go and see it again and again.
Would a member be able to walk in at any time to the exhibit hall?
Yeah, exactly the same as a member can come around and see what they intend to do.
So it's always cheaper to become a member and just go more...
That's more cheaper, you know, $142, please.
I'm a few houses down, so I do go often.
Take checks.
Great.
Any other questions? Any other discussion? Do we hear a motion to close the hearing?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chuck. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Gary. Any discussion on closing the hearing? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do people want to take a three-minute break, or plow ahead and discuss this and take a vote?
I'm going to take a vote.
Board have any ideas on how they want to move forward on any of all this?
I think I'm fine moving forward. What do the others feel?
Well, we've closed the hearing, so we're in the discussion. Do we hear a motion to...
Mr. Chairman, I move that the application is in conformance with the plan of conservation, development, and comprehensive plan.
Thank you, Chuck. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Marge. There's a discussion on the POCD. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the four requested waivers with a couple of stipulations. One, that we've already stated, that the applicant continue to work with the Police Commission and the Department of Transportation on traffic, vehicular traffic and pedestrian traffic issues. And the second, that the applicant address the questions that the town engineer has sort of stipulated in the town engineer's report. And the four waivers are stipulated as municipal fiscal impact analysis, these are the waivers that are requested, public safety and traffic analysis, two, three, public works analysis, that's where the town engineer's requirements have to be met, and four, natural resource analysis.
Thank you, Chuck. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Gary. Discussion on the waivers. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Master plan and zone change.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the master plan and zone change application as set forth in the application.
Thank you, Chuck. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Gary. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the site plan application, subject to the three stipulations that Keith had listed, and the addition of the one stipulation that we all agreed to here with regard to compliance with vehicular and pedestrian traffic requirements of the Police Commission and the DOT.
Thank you, Chuck. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Marge. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
So moved.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the Coastal Management Act and CAM application.
Thank you, Chuck. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Gary. Is there a discussion? Call those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So moved.
Done. Great.
You good to go?
Thank you.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to close this here?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chuck. Thank you, Lynn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.